6:30, would you please silence your telephones and please rise with me to say, "Pledge of Allegiance."
Ms. Wood, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Wood?
Here.
Counselor Escobell? Counselor Allen?
Here.
Counselor Hardy? Counselor Nicely? Counselor Vendetti?
Present.
Mayor Villagrana?
Present. Now, we move on to number four, approval of the agenda. I would ask that we, uh... 5B be pulled, because I need a correction on that. So I would accept the motion.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items.
Second.
Except for 5B.
Except for 5B.
D is in dog or B is in boy? Dog or boy? D or B?
B, like in boy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
And Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Counselor Wood?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. Now, having pulled the minutes for January 18th, I would like it to be corrected on, uh, the item when... For the museum, it does not show, but I abstained on there. So corrections be made to abstain. Moving on to administrative information. Counsel... Mr. Allen, Andy? Ms. Wood?
No, no report.
Mr. Vendetti?
No report.
I would just like to announce that our next mayor's chat will be held here at the city council, and we will have coffee. But, uh, we're gonna plan on zooming it, hoping to reach, uh, a lot more people. I appreciate all the people that do come, who was holding it at Two Sisters, but I think that we also need to go out and see if there's anybody else that would like to be involved. And other than that, I haven't been to meetings yet, but I am going to start with the meetings. So, uh... Now we will go on to public comments. Three minutes, please. First speaker is Larry Baker.
Good evening. It's me again. And it snowed again. And I went out there and I used my big snow blower. I love to do it, you know? And I cleaned the street for two blocks. And then about an hour and a half later, here comes the city pushing the snow up on the sidewalk. And what I measured in front of our home, it was three foot wide and two foot high. And it was wet, but then it froze. Then, that made it more difficult to... To remove. In fact, I didn't get it off. I had to chop it off the next day and the next day. Uh, I would, uh... I'd like to get together with our city crew and see if we can do things a bit different on the snow removal, uh, on the south side of the street. So that we get... Get it clean. And the parking is clean. So I would, uh... I'm just asking for the, uh... If we could get together, not argue about it, but just talk about, maybe there is a way to avoid the problem. And it's on, like I say, it's our side of the street. So I say no more, but I would like to have someone respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next visitor is Tim Jordan.
Tim Jordan, 844 Sumo Avenue. I'd like to, uh, comment publicly on the statement that the city issued that was printed in the Florence Citizen on January 21st. Uh, there were several references to the total cost of the previous lawsuit. Uh, it said there was a $1,000 deductible and a $54,290.85 settlement. The run loss, uh, also includes $36,695.3 and expenses paid and $11,377 in legal for a total cost of 102... I'm wondering why that wasn't included. The second thing is, um, back to Mr. Patterson's contracts in 2019. Um, according to the city's statement, it was signed on November the 4th of 2019, but the settlement itself was not settled till November 13th, 2019. I'd like to know why council issued Mr. Patterson an amendment to his contract nine days before the settlement of this lawsuit and one day before the election. So there was... There's been some commentary or whatever entered in here about votes. I'm gonna go ahead and read from the minutes. From November 4th, 2019. "An executive session pursuant to 26..." Or, excuse me, 24-64024E "for the purposes of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and for instructing negotiators. The council returned from executive session at 8:15, and a motion was made by Counselor Villagrana and second by Councilmember Vendetti to approve the 13th amendment to the city manager's contract." I'd like to know why that was done by you two before this settlement was done and one day before an election. Paul, I've asked you several times. You've admitted you never saw the contract. So how did anybody from council go into an executive session, come out and vote on a contract they never saw? The, uh... For the record also, I'd like to put who voted on this contract. Counselmember Villagrana, Counselmember Nicely, Counselmember Vendetti, Counselmember Baker, Counselmember Cobbler absent, Counselmember Upton, Mayor Orr. The next day the election happened, and on the 18th, the following council, I believe, was sworn in. Uh, that would have been Councilwoman Wood, Counselmember Escobell, and Counselmember Allen. They were not a part, as I'm aware of, of any settlement or part of this contract that was voted on by the previous council. I think that needs to be entered into the record. I think some of the current council have been raked over the coals because of this contract, and they were not a part of it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Glenn.
Sarah Glenn, Canyon City, operator at the City of Florence Water Treatment Plant since September of 2020. On 11/20/2020, a Friday, my immediate supervisor, Brandon Harris, responded to a question I posed by making a gesture of ejaculating on the floor in front of my assistant supervisor, Kevin Wordsbaugh, and my coworkers, Dan Kelso, Aaron Jackson, and Stanley Eichelberger. Kevin walked away laughing and exclaimed, "I didn't see anything, just rolling some dice." An investigation later performed by Detective Worley of Florence PD concluded that situation was excusable as a funny joke, because Brandon often made that gesture in jest in front of male coworkers previous to my employment. After that investigation, I was deemed someone they were allowed professional distance from, because I don't know how to take a joke. Because I wasn't willing to participate in allowing Brandon to steal resources and labor from the City of Florence residents, and because I recognized that I would have to spend 100% of my employment at the plant fighting against an old-school and unacceptable culture. For one year, while these unacceptable behaviors continued and worsened without resolve in sight, I acted professionally and responsibly. I continued coming forward and followed the direction given to me, but I have had multiple instances of people I have no relationship with presenting a notion that I somehow am the problem in this scenario. Your very own HR tech, with 13 exhausting job titles and no doubt blurred responsibilities and superiority claims, I have a severe personality complex and threaten my job on a public forum. I'm 38 years old, and I have had three very short interactions with her throughout my most recent year of life, and her employment began almost one year later than mine. No one seems to have been given accurate details of my experiences, so let me air some of them now. Sexual harassment, forced to do personal labor for Brandon with government-owned equipment and materials, prevented from advancing as quickly as I was able, forced to do labor and janitorial activities for the majority of my week while others were treated to company lunches and in-depth operator activities and training. I was retaliated against for coming forward by overlooking me for advancements I was more than qualified to have, punished for receiving a raise I never asked for. I have been referred to as little missy, threatened continuously, called a crackhead, been told they tried to make me so miserable that I quit, but it didn't work. And finally, I was placed on administrative leave four months ago by your interim city manager, Sean Garrett, and Lori Cobbler, because the only inappropriate behavior thus far has been me posting my pre-employment criminal background check and tox screen results to prevent continued slander of my name by my superiors. I was told I would be contacted as soon as the investigations were completed. That was over a month ago, and I haven't heard a single word from your interim city manager since I was placed on leave. I have been silenced under the guise of investigative process while my harassers remain in their positions in advance. I have been silenced while your employees slander my name and create divisiveness about my employment, but more importantly, you all have remained silent. When you have a responsibility to take a very public stand against this toxic and unprofessional workplace culture, I will no longer be silenced, nor will I allow you to be comfortable in your silence. And I hope someone finds the time to take down those blinds.
Our next speaker is Deputy Chief Vannelli.
Good evening, or Bill Vannelli, 600 West Third, Florence, Colorado, 812... Or 81226, Deputy Chief. Good evening, council and citizens of Florence. This is my last official city council meeting, uh, as a deputy police chief. And I wanted to take a minute and express my thanks to you, the council, for always having the best interest of the police department in mind, whether to indemnify the whole police department after Senate Bill 217, or to allow the budget for the hiring of two additional police officers for this new budget cycle, and many other things that are too numerous to, uh... To list. Again, thank you very much. To the citizens of Florence, it's been an honor serving this community and your needs for the past seven and a half years. I've met some incredible people while serving as an officer, a sergeant, and as a deputy police chief. I will miss this city and the citizens. Thank you very much. Appreciate every one of you. Um, I took on the role of deputy chief in 2019. In the two-plus years in this role, um, I had some... The department's had its share of growing pains. But there's always been, uh, great police officers who are at the heart and soul of the organization. It's been an honor to serve with each and every one of you who wore the Florence Police uniform, and especially the men and women who are in the department today. I've made some lifelong lasting friendships, and I hope that my leadership style has made a good impression on you. Thank you very much. My decision to leave the Florence Police Department was an agonizing, lots-of-sleepless-nights decision. I feel that I can no longer support the organization, police department, that doesn't support its officers. I have fielded hundreds of questions from officers as to why the chief would send such disrespectful, condescending emails to everyone, including myself, with very little explanation. Or why he would not stand up for the officers. I found... I found myself having to answer these questions with no answers to give, except, "Let me find out." I was told by the ch... Or, well, the chief and I discussed the, uh... An executive session with council a couple of weeks ago to address some issues that had come to light within the city and the department, pay being the biggest issue for the officers. Uh, after the meeting and an interview with the media, I have been closed out of decisions within the PD and found that the chief was interviewing officers in a formal setting, which violates their Garrity rights, and asking about officers without informing them that there was an investigation about them with other officers. The latest victim shaming that occurred in a media, uh, comment last week, when the chief made a comment that a certain individual was not a victim, that is wrong. I can no longer support, uh, those actions. I, too, on Saturday morning at, uh, 10:21 a.m., received an email. Good thing I was here cleaning out my office for the last time. From Chief Prickett, "Your services as a non-duty law enforcement officer will no longer be needed up to your last date requested of February 9th." That was when my resignation was effective. February 9th is this Wednesday. "Turn in your patrol vehicle today by 5:00 p.m. with your personal items removed. Unit keys in my mailbox. You shall not return to the PD in uniform, but in civilian attire for the remaining two days. Your last two scheduled days, Tuesday, February 8th and Wednesday, February 9th, shall be from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in plain clothes. Bullet points, use this time to complete turning in equipment, cleaning out your personal belongings, and transferring files, paperwork, et cetera. Your department ID and keys shall be turned in to Mike Engle upon your arrival on Tuesday, February 8th. There will be no authorized persons allowed at Battle this Monday, February 7th, which is the auto theft task force. For department security, you will come and go through the front office entrance of the PD after you turn in your keys." So at this time, I will respectfully turn over my badge and my ID to Chief Prickett.
Is there any further comments from anybody out there?
I would like to thank Deputy Chief Bill Vannelli for everything he's done for this city also. And I'm very, very upset to see you go, Bill.
I think that goes without saying for myself. Having known Deputy Chief Vannelli as a very good officer, honest person, I am very sorry to see him go. Any other comments?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
If there's no other comment from anybody, then we'll move on. At this time, I would like to appoint Ms. Gail Nelson to the Planning Commission effective today. Discussion? Comments? Ms. Nelson?
You're aboard.
All business. Audit outline.
Um, so Lori's not here. This is just the audit outline. This is giving the dates and what the, uh, financial audit will include for this year. So this is just giving you guys that information so that we can get that set up so that they can complete the audit.
Discussion? Public comment? Our next item is spring cleanup.
So this is just discussion, how you guys kinda want spring, uh, cleanup to look. Um, so with this, um, normally with the trash service, we'd go around and pick things up, um, and do things a little differently as we will be ending trash service April 1st. Um, and so that service will not be available how we want it to look this year if we want public works to try to use other equipment to, um... Pick up items and set a few dumpsters out where the dump pit is, where branches and those types of things are taken care of, or how we want it to look this year.
Discussion? Mr. Vendetti?
No.
Ms. Wood?
Would it be possible just to run clean, uh, spring cleanup earlier, or is that not...
Uh, we can try to look and see if we can do it earlier.
Mr. Allen?
Do you have any suggestions, Sean? The staff have any suggestions?
It might be looking with the, uh... If we're gonna end April 1st, it might be better to maybe do it earlier this year, if we can set something up. I can get with Sam, and we can see what we can do from there.
Thank you.
As Sam, you, uh... For myself, uh, Sam, have you, uh... And the interim manager have ideas about how we're gonna proceed?
Not quite at this time yet. But if we were planning on doing it in the third week of April, like what we usually do, if we do do it earlier, we can certainly look at that prospect and see what may happen. If we don't, in the third week of April, we just be brush cleaned up, pile of dirt, pile of concrete, cleaned up, and then we can take away that way. But mattresses and box springs and stuff like that will stay. The steel will pick up, which would be the water heaters and ditch work or whatever, have you that way. So we'll have to look into something like that. But if we don't take the box springs, yeah, box springs and the mattresses and stuff like that can be burned because of the toxic materials, the bones and something like that, we actually don't want that. We do not want those kind of foods, foodings into the earth. But if we had a trash service to pick those up, and I understand that, uh, prices have went up more at Twin for, um, box springs and mattresses up here at $15 apiece. So, yeah, we got some options we have to weigh, and we'll have to look at it in the coming weeks, I guess, huh?
Well, hopefully we'll have the plan in place in a couple of... By the first of next month, I hope. Okay. Our next item... Any public comments on this? Our next item is, uh, limiting increase to water tap fees.
So with this, as you'll see, we, uh, got a request from Frederickson Johnson in Bellevue, who is, uh, the representative for Mr. J Stoner. He's getting ready to, uh, kinda re-kickstart the Willow Creek subdivision. And so with this, they are requesting that we not raise our water tap fees more than 5% per year to help limit construction costs while they're doing this subdivision. Um, and so this is being brought to you guys to see if that's something you wanna discuss, and we can get, uh, more configurative numbers on that and what that would look like, um, if it's something you guys wanna look at.
Discussion, Mr. Allen?
I think we just need to make sure he's actually building, um, and not give somebody... If he's not gonna carry through, I've seen a lot of times in the past, water tap fees have been, somebody's gotten a break for them, and they never build or do anything with them. Um, so I'd like to make sure there's something in there that if we do decide to give him a break on water tap or not wait or not raise the fee, that he's actually being productive.
Ms. Wood?
Same, I agree.
I agree with Mr. Allen.
I think that it, uh... That it would, uh... Would really be in line if we checked with others before we make a decision on this.
Okay, I'll get... I'll get some more information on it, and then, uh, we can have the next council to go forward with from there.
Thank you. Public comment?
Paul is probably in the back.
Would you come up, please? State your name and address.
Kathy Madonna, 504 Brookway. I don't think we should be giving a break on the water fees. There's a gentleman that's gonna be making quite a bit of money if he's successful in what he's building. Our water is valuable, and I don't think we should be doing that.
I don't think it's an... And I think it's... It's just that we won't increase. Is that correct? We're not giving them a break. That was my misunderstanding, sorry. We're not giving them a break, it's just asking that we not raise the fees.
Okay. But is it raised for everybody else and not him? Is that what he's asking?
The request would be that we don't raise it more than 5% annually from here on out while he's doing the development.
I think he should be treated like anyone else, basically.
Are we raising any of the water taps for anybody else? Are we raising anything? Is there a reason he's asking for that?
We don't have anything to raise any tap fees at this time.
Okay. I'd like for him to be treated like anyone else.
I would agree, ma'am.
I agree. Thank you. Any other comments? Now we'll move on to action items. Number 9A, Resolution Number 20220702. A resolution adopting a, I'm gonna say sick bank instead of a sink bank, sick bank policy. Mr. Garrett?
Yeah, and so what this is, is this would just be creating a sick bank policy that would be, um, pretty much self-funded from employees. So in order to be eligible to use the sick bank hours, um, employees would have to opt into the program and donate 16 hours' worth of their sick leave to the program. And then if we had an unfortunate incident where somebody was out for a while, um, there was some FMLA stuff or something else that occurred, that they would be able to pull from that sick bank and get a little extra trying to help cover their cost.
Ms. Wood?
Would that be do... Done through an application process?
Yes, it'd be done through an application process.
So would you form a committee, or how would you decide whether or not someone qualifies?
So that would go to, um, the HR and then, uh, city manager and make sure it's eligible on their FMLA and what the situation is to make sure that it meets the requirements.
Mr. Vendetti?
No comment.
Mr. Allen?
Well, sounds like that's what the staff would like. I think that'd be very helpful for somebody.
You know, uh, when I was teaching school, we had a sick bank, and that worked very well. It helped those people that, uh, did have physical issues. Public comment? We will now go to 9B. Public hearing for temporary premises modification.
Paul, we need to go back to 9A. You guys need to vote on it. Section item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would make a motion to pass Resolution Number 2022-07-02, Resolution Adopting a Sick Bank Policy.
Second.
Discussion? Public discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Counselor Wood?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. Now we go on to 9B. Public hearing for temporary premises modification for the Florence Brewing Company. Ms. Hill? We have a visitor from... Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Yes, Ariana Kibler, 46 Oriole, here in Florence. Uh, we're just applying again for our annual food truck rallies. Uh, the date should be on that DR 8442 form for you. Exact same layout as before, uh, shutting that street down on South Pike Peak between Front and Railroad.
Discussions? Questions?
Everything good, Jessica?
Yes, all the paperwork's in order, and the fees have been submitted to the state.
I do have a question on that. The councilman, Escobell, did express a question that he wanted me to ask. Is this just for the specific dates?
Just for the specific dates listed on that form, yeah. So it'd start at 8:00 a.m. and then end by 10, 11:00 p.m.
And he wanted clarification, so, um, on other dates that are not on there, the picnic tables will not be in the parking.
We do... We don't have a permit for the parking spaces with picnic tables. Uh, we could explore that option if the road is fixed, uh, with the terrible condition right there in the gutter. But as it stands, it's too much of a tripping hazard for patrons and employees, so... And just anybody that parks there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vendetti? I understand that, uh, your request that you have actually, uh... With the truck rallies, only have one a month? Is that correct?
There are two months. We added a date for Wholesome to celebrate their 125th anniversary. And then we are, uh... There's a second date in May to do a fundraiser with the museum across the street. Other than that, it's one per month.
Yeah, and, you know, I think it's important that the public realizes that, uh... You do partner with a lot of people to help them out. And I think that's important that everybody should understand. That it's not strictly for the brewing company. It's, I know you partner with the museum, you partner with, now with Portland, and... Last year you partnered with the public libraries and with Canyon City, and... You know, I think it's worthwhile, so I really congratulate you guys on that. Uh, may I have a motion to approve? Oh, hold on. I gotta get... Any public comment first? Yes, ma'am.
Gail Nelson, 118 West 4th Street, Florence. The picture that they have here looks like the red square goes on to other people's property. Is this just on the street, or are they going farther across the street?
Arianna, you want to address that?
So the square encompasses our current liquor license, which is our building, the sidewalk in front of it, the sidewalk alongside it, which is all in our current liquor license. So we expand into the street, not onto anybody's property at all.
Ms. Nelson?
That's fine. I just want a clarification, because it looks like it goes into other properties.
Thank you both ladies.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? I would accept the motion for premises modification for the Florence Brewing Company?
I'd like to make a motion for a temporary premise modification for the Florence Brewing Company for the dates listed.
Second.
Discussion?
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Wood?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. Now we move on to 9C, Ordinance 0207-2022. An ordinance updating the Florence Municipal Code regarding traffic. Chief?
Yes, sir. This is what we were talking about previously with any tickets we write for, driver's license, registration, license plates, and insurance. The way the ordinance is written originally, if the people get their insurance before their court date, get their driver's license if it's suspended, for example, and they get it reinstated, or license plates that are expired, they get them before court, then the way the ordinance is written, that would be, they would pay nothing. And so this just makes them pay court costs and the surcharge, which takes care of the time the court clerk has to put in, the ticket, the amount that wrote the ticket, my office clerks, you know, for handling those tickets to get them to court, etc. And so it just gives us a little bit of reimbursement for the ticket instead of just tossing it out. And like I explained before, if somebody is speeding, and they promised not to speed again, that doesn't mean they weren't guilty at the time. And this kind of just basically gets us some type of fine out of it instead of just completely dismissing everything.
Any questions? Discussion?
So we're finding now, especially due to COVID, that sometimes when someone is renewing their registration, they're not getting it back within the time limit before their plates expire. If they provide a paper showing that they did renew, are we okay with?
So that would be something I would assume the judge would have to take into account. Obviously, like I said, if they, if they show us on the roadside, that hasn't been an issue, per se, in our county in Pueblo. We get a lot of that. Cars driving around with no license plates at all, and they have an appointment. So like I said, we usually write the ticket for something like that, and then they can come in and show the judge their paperwork, because most of them don't carry it with them in the car. So that would be something they could address the judge with, and he could make a decision on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vendetti?
No comment.
Mr. Allen?
Matt, is this pretty much what any other cities do?
Yeah, I mean, it's just the idea that you've expended the funds to have the officers equipped and ready to go out and enforce the law. So it's essentially a way of kind of balancing equity.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have not, any public questions, comments? I would accept the motion to adopt ordinance updating the Florence Municipal Code regarding traffic?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 0207-2022.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Wood?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. We have, for our upcoming agenda items, we have changes to the Florence Municipal Code pay scale, ordinance annexation petition. Any other items?
So I would request an executive session for the purposes of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators pursuant to 24-6402, Subpart 4E, for the purposes of pending litigation. I would encourage you to invite the interim HR, the interim city manager, and the city attorney.
May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into the executive session?
Second.
Roll call?
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Counselor Wood?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrana?
Yes. So it's 7:07, and we will adjourn for an executive session, and our chamber's over there at 5:00.
Okay, we're on our, thank you.
It's 8:28, and we're back into session. So any discussion from any city council member? If there is none, then we adjourn this meeting at 8:28.